...of the United States of America, head to the Republic for justice stands one in hand under your badge individual with liberty and justice.
I'm going to make a motion to suspend the rules and bring suspension item which is in legislature up to the front of our meeting. Our speaker is, needs to catch a flight, so I'm gonna move to suspend the rules. All in favor say aye. Any opposed? Motion prevails.
Presentation by Luisa Aviles, Director, Group Violence Intervention, National Network for Safe Communities.
Welcome Luisa. And I just want to preface this briefly by saying that Luisa is working in Minneapolis right now, and we had the opportunity to catch her on a trip in to work with Minneapolis and as I mentioned earlier, just before she flies out of town. And she's here representing her organization, the National Network for Safe Communities. Just to give us some background information about the programs that she is part of the network for. So welcome. And it was wonderful to meet with you a few weeks back, and it's wonderful that you were able to squeeze this into your trip. So thanks for being here.
I really appreciate the invitation, and thank you all for making time. I know you have a busy agenda, so, and I'm from New York, so I speak quickly anyway. So I'm gonna share as much as I possibly can, and then hopefully leave a little bit of time for questions, and I'm happy to share my contact information if there's more folks would like to hear afterwards. So I'm Luisa Aviles. I'm the Director of the Group Violence Intervention at the National Network for Safe Communities. We are an action research organization based at John Jay College of Criminal Justice in New York. We work with cities around the country and increasingly around the world to develop strategies to address serious violence that focus on the most serious violence in a community while also minimizing arrest and incarceration, and strengthening the ability of communities to set their own standards around violence. So I'm going to talk a little bit about what the group violence intervention looks like, the research that it's based on, and it's, it's, we are really adamant about saying this isn't a program. It's a framework, it's an approach. Every city we work with, and we're working with about two dozen cities right now, including Minneapolis, but also in this sort of general neck of the woods, Detroit, Kalamazoo, South Bend, Indiana, Gary, Indiana, Chicago. Every city implements this a little bit differently, and I think that's one of the strengths of the approach. So first and foremost, our approach is called the Group Violence Intervention. That's because groups turn out to matter profoundly when it comes to focusing on the most serious violence. This is what the research shows, and this is based on action research we've done on the ground with about 26 cities over the course of the past six years. We start by getting the absolute best frontline law enforcement in that city into a room, and have them talk us through all of the active violent groups contributing to violence in their city. We then go through something like five years of homicide data, and we talk about every single homicide incident, and we ask that same cohort of frontline law enforcement from across police and probation, and prosecutors' offices, and federal partners to tell us if someone in one of those groups that's contributing to violence in the city was involved in that homicide incident. And so this represents 26 cities around the country, ranging from cities with a catchment area of about 27,000 people up to cities with 2.2 million people. And this is what we find. 0.6% of a city's overall population on average is identified by law enforcement as being involved in groups that contribute to violence. And we define group as two or more people who associate and engage in violence together. We don't say gang deliberately. Gang conjures particular things to people around hierarchy and organization and colors, and that's not what we see on the ground in virtually every city. We see small groups of people, many of whom have grown up together, live on the same block, or in the same housing development. Excuse me, there's very little leadership, there's very little hierarchy and structure. That's why we say group instead of gang. So 0.6% of a city's population on average is identified by the best law enforcement in the city as being involved in these groups, and those groups in turn, our response, are connected to 50% of homicides in the cities on average. And that's a minimum. Those are only incidents where law enforcement says, yes, we are 100% certain that one of the people involved in this incident is a member of one of these groups. So we throw out anything where they're not 100% certain. So this is really a good thing, because it means that when we're talking about the most serious violence in a community, we're talking about a truly tiny number of people in any given city. And the converse of that, I think, which is really important, is it means that even in the neighborhoods that experience the most violence, the vast majority of people living in that, in those neighborhoods are not at risk for being involved in violence, are not at risk for being victims of violence, are not at risk for being perpetrators of violence, any more so than anyone else in the city. Even in, you know, quote unquote, high-risk age groups, high-risk demographics, it turns out to be a vanishingly small proportion of people in those, in those demographics that are even involved in groups, let alone involved in violence. So we just talked about the extent to which these, this tiny number of people are involved in homicides. Obviously, a lot of that is as perpetrators of violence. They also are at astronomically high risk of being hurt and killed. When we talk about the violence problem in virtually any city around the country, we're talking about the deaths of young, young men of color, right? So the national homicide rate is about five per 100,000. The homicide rate for this core population of young men of color involved in groups is about 554 per 100,000. And there's recent research actually out of Northeast, Northwestern University, showing that for people who are close to victims of homicides and shootings, right, who have social ties and social networks with those people, after someone in their network is shot or killed, their risk of being victimized goes up by about 900%. And that's not really durable, right? That's, that's not in perpetuity, but for a little while, their risk of being hurt skyrockets. The other thing that we've learned about group-involved violence is that it has very little to do with the illicit economy or making money. And this is one of the reasons we don't say gang. When we talk about gang, people think of cartels, and the Bloods, and the Crips, and people making lots of money around drug trafficking. And when we talk about group-involved violence in the cities we work with, it is about standing beef, standing vendetta between groups that often people can't remember what the vendetta started over. There are two groups in San Francisco that have, that has been the standing beef in San Francisco for 30 years, and I think it was over who was going to rap next at a rap contest. So the violence is about respect, group norms, this idea of the street code, that the enemy of my friend is also my enemy, the police are against us, we're street soldiers, that's a term we hear sometimes. We find that very, when we talk to those cohorts of really good frontline law enforcement and say, why did this homicide happen? The answer is almost never because of money. It might be because of respect. You're standing on my corner, and that's disrespectful, but it's not because you're taking money out of my pocket. So there have been two major approaches, right? So far, I haven't told you anything. You don't, probably don't already know, groups and, and groups of young men contribute disproportionately to serious violence and make up the vast majority of victims. There have been two major approaches to, to gang violence and group violence historically, right? And this is a little oversimplified, but bear with me. The law enforcement approach in broad strokes has been, we crack down on gangs, we crack down on individual gang members, we go up on wires, we run RICO cases, we crack down on drugs and drug dealing. And, and the root causes sort of social service approach has said, we have, we address the drivers of group and gang violence. We have to improve communities, we have to create economic opportunity, we have to support families, we have to address structural racism and educational segregation, right? And that's how we're going to reduce group and gang-involved violence. The record so far is that neither of these, neither of these approaches have produced the outcomes that people want, right? There's not a single city in the country that has eliminated gang violence using either of these methods. And we can talk about why that is, and certainly there's an argument that says, well, we haven't funded, you know, things like social service interventions the way that, you know, communities want them funded. Certainly, law enforcement will say, we're, we're perpetually understaffed, we don't have enough people. But the reality is, no one has figured out how to address this problem satisfactorily using either of these approaches. So the group violence intervention is basically designed to say, if it's a tiny number of people, and they have names and home addresses, and they're known to frontline law enforcement and to community members, because they always are, then we don't need to create sort of structural change in our systems in order to engage differently and effectively with that really small group. So GVI is a, is a framework that aligns partners from across social services, law enforcement, and community leadership to say, we're going to focus differently. We're going to recognize the difference of this very small group. This is, this is a small group of people that, that behaves differently, is at different risk for involvement in the criminal justice system, and for hurting, hurting and killing others, or getting hurt or killed themselves, and we're going to engage with them differently. It has an explicit and ruthless focus on the most serious violence. So this is a strategy aimed at homicides and shootings. And it's not a program. Programs have start dates and end dates. This is a way of thinking about a public safety priority. So these are the core elements, right? I mentioned, community members, social services, and law enforcement. Community members' role in an approach like this is to say explicitly to this high-risk population, and there are some mechanisms we use to deliver those messages that are very straightforward. But the message they're delivering is, we love you, we need you alive and safe in this community, we don't want you to go to prison, we need you here with us, you are the lifeblood of our community, you are our sons and our husbands and the fathers of our children and our cousins, and we need you here, and we hate what you're doing, and we demand that it stop. You're killing us, right? Our community cannot tolerate this violence. We can't lose children to this. Our lives are torn apart by the violence on a daily basis. There are reasons that we don't always talk to the police about what we know. Don't mistake that for thinking this is okay. It's not, and we need you to stop, right? So that's, that's the message that communities can deliver really effectively. Then there's a social service component which says, we have failed you, right? Social services are not, traditional social services are not designed for this population. They're designed for the 99.4% of, of the population that isn't at this astronomically high risk for involvement in violence. Traditional educational services, GED programs, job training are not what this population needs. But the things they are, they do need are incredibly deliverable, in part because we're talking about such a small number of people. They need help staying safe. They need small amounts of money to reduce what are, what be, quickly become huge barriers to safety and stability, like money to put food on the table, money to clear fines off of licenses, things like that. They need new ways of thinking, and, and peer-to-peer support, and help addressing the trauma that they're living with. And then eventually, they need connection to traditional services, right? So the second prong of, of this framework is figuring out within our existing social service landscape, how do we set up something special for these guys? And then lastly, law enforcement has a role in, in an approach like this, which is to say, we can't get everybody for everything all the time. You guys know that. You maybe know it better than we do, right? We don't catch you when, always when you do something wrong. But we're going to treat violence differently. We're going to recognize that violence is driven by groups. We're going to hold the groups accountable for the violence. And when a group becomes violent, or a group crosses the line in the sand that we're drawing, we're going to bring sanctions to that whole group. And that doesn't mean we're going to arrest people for things they didn't do. But what it does mean is that we're going to acknowledge that this population is incredibly exposed to the criminal justice system. Folks who are in groups tend to be on probation and parole, they tend to be involved in other types of low-level criminality that expose them to prosecution. A lot of the time, those sorts of cases aren't anyone's top priority, right? But they can be, because there's tremendous discretion within the criminal justice system to say what we're going to focus on. And law enforcement's part of the message is to say, we were telling you ahead of time, we're putting you on notice of the consequences for violence, which are no longer going to be, we're going to get the shooter for the shooting, we're still going to do that, but if that's a group-involved incident, if the person who did that incident is part of a group, or if one group in particular, we see that group becoming really violent, we're going to focus on the whole group. So a little bit more on each of these, and I will move quickly here. Moral engagement, look, what does that look like? It looks like parents and coaches, and respected community leaders, not the people that we necessarily think of it, but the, the folks that the guys in the, in the groups respect, right? And every city has these. It can be tough to find them, but they can say things no one else can say. They can challenge the street code and, and express that we love you, we need you here, and we, you have to stop what you're doing. Help as a moral and practical obligation, right? We want you alive and out of prison. That's how we're going to define success. We're going to help protect you from the people trying to hurt you. We're going to help you deal with the pain that you're living with, because you've lost friends and family, and you've been hurt yourself. We're going to connect you with new relationships and people who can support you, who've been where you're, where you're at. Street outreach is really, really, really good at this. Street outreach workers are amazing at, at delivering this message and at doing this sort of service navigation. And then lastly, law enforcement is, is really clear ahead of time, and this is where the deterrence part comes in, right? That ahead of time, we're going to explain exactly what the consequences will be for, for ongoing involvement in violence. We don't want to do this. We don't, we, we would much rather see you put the guns down and stop doing what you're doing, but we can commit, and every department we've ever worked with, even ones that are tremendously underfunded, can commit to focusing on a group when that group is involved in violence, if they have to, because it's such a small, it's such a small population. And we deliver this message through big group meetings called call-ins, where we take advantage of the fact that a lot of folks in these groups are on probation or parole, which means that we have a mechanism to compel them to attend a meeting. We also do these via home visits, right? We capitalize on the fact that community members, outreach workers, law enforcement have a tremendously granular understanding of who these people are and who needs this messaging. And we go to their, their houses, or deliver messages in the context of probation meetings, or deliver messages on street corners, right? And when I say we, I mean, these stakeholders can do this together. And this is how we talk about this with our community, which desperately, in every city we've worked with, we're involved because the community can't stand the violence and wants it to stop. And what this approach says to community is, we know that there are not many dangerous offenders. We know that nearly everybody in our communities is not part of this problem. And we know that those offenders, right, are more traumatized and victimized than they are predatory largely. We think they'll listen to you in their community whom they respect, and we're going to create safe ways for you to communicate with them about what you expect from them as members of your community. We think a lot of them want help, and we're prepared to give that to them as a city. We're going to tell them ahead of time what the law enforcement response is going to be if they continue to hurt people. And only if the shooting and killing continues, will law enforcement bring that, that pressure to bear. This capitalizes on a lot of common ground that we think is left unoccupied by a lot of traditional approaches, right? Everyone wants the most violent offenders controlled, even the groups. Everybody wants the community to be safe. Everybody wants law enforcement to be able to take a step back. Everybody wants community standards to take over, and for communities to be safe, because those communities can set their own standards, rather than being safe because law enforcement has a very heavy presence. And everyone wants a more respectful and transparent relationship between these stakeholders. And the good news here is that this stuff works. We've been, the, this approach has been evaluated and peer-reviewed journals dozens of times at this point, and it consistently works really, really, really well. So I'll, I'll stop there.
Well, just because the type is kind of small, can you just read off the...
Oh, sure. So the two most, I'm actually not even sure they're on here. The two most recent evaluations, one was in New Haven, Connecticut, which has been implementing this approach for about five years. They saw 75% decline in monthly group-involved shootings. They've cut their overall violence in half since they've taken on this approach. That evaluation was done by Yale, it was released last year. Oakland, California, which has been getting a lot of good press recently, also, this is the strategy that Oakland uses as their main approach to serious violence. And they were also recently peer-evaluated out of Rutgers University, and the, that evaluation found a 30% decline in homicides and a 29% decline in shootings that was directly attributed to, to this approach. So these are also, these are evaluations from Boston, Stockton, Chicago, Indianapolis, Lowell, Massachusetts, New Orleans, Cincinnati.
Thank you. Ms. Naker.
Thank you so much for this presentation and for taking time for us. I really appreciate, and it resonates with me a great deal, how you describe that third way between law enforcement and increasing social services and safety nets. I feel like that's exactly the conversation that we've been wrestling with as a community over the last few weeks, as we've seen record levels of violence. I guess I'm, I'm wondering how, how does a community, you said this is not a program, it's an approach. So how does a community take this on? What's the first step? What's the likely cost? What are the investments that we make to do this?
So our theory of change at the National Network is, you start by identifying a problem. And this approach grew out of a problem of homicide and shootings in the first few cities we were working with 20 years ago. And then you assemble a coalition of, of the willing. And if you can't do it with the people around the table, then it's not real, and we got to think of something else. So this is an approach that's designed to operate within existing resources. Police departments everywhere that we've worked with can, can do this sort of policing, particularly because it doesn't require a wholesale change in how law enforcement engages with crime across the board. It says, we're going to set really clear parameters, and when a group becomes the most violent in our city, this is the approach we're going to take, and we're going to put pressure on that whole group. That's not in perpetuity. That's for as long as it takes for that group to understand, we are cracking down on you in ways that we don't normally, that are absolutely legal, that you've created because of what you're involved in, until folks get that message. So every police department and, and public safety landscape that we've worked with has been able to put that together based on existing resources. That's one exception to that is Newburgh, New York, which is the brokest city that I've ever worked with, did use federal funds to hire one analyst. They had never had one, and they said, in order to know who to focus on, we, we need an analyst. So they, they did get a new investment there. Same thing on social services. We're talking about a tiny number of people. And the reality of our experience has been that they're, they'll be, they'll be reluctant to take services up, especially at the beginning. So over time, obviously, we want all of them to take up services. The lived experience tends to be that they're suspicious at first. So we look for those people in the community and those organizations in the community that are already trying desperately to work with these guys. And again, our experience has been, every community has reentry organizations, shelters for people who have experienced violence, right, food pantries, and the problem is they're really difficult to navigate, and they have a really hard time getting in touch with this population. But if we can bring them into a room and give them an opportunity to talk directly to those, to those guys, and say, we know your needs are different, here's how we can help you, that both resonates with the folks in the, the folks in the groups, and it turns out to be, the best social service organizations say, you're going to put us into a room with these guys, and we don't have to go find them, and you're literally going to let us talk to them directly? Like, please, this is our life's work, we desperately, those are the conversations we want to be having. And I don't say that to say that these sorts of supports don't benefit from tremendously more investment. I, I think they do. This sort of support is underfunded nationally. But can you get it done often within existing resources, at least at the beginning? Absolutely.
So you're saying that there's not like a defined startup cost?
There's not. No, I mean, the, the one thing that we say to every single city, you should plan on, on finding a way to pay for, is someone to run, someone to coordinate this approach. This is an approach that requires a lot of agencies and entities that don't work together often, and definitely don't work for each other. You know, the chief doesn't work for the DA, who doesn't work for the US Attorney, who doesn't work for the social service providers, and nominally, everybody works for the community, but that's, that's a little complicated, right? So having someone in place who can manage this, whether it's out of an office of violence prevention, or a city-level staff person who just directs this work, or it's added to someone's portfolio who already does work in this area, we've seen that happen in all kinds of different ways. But that's, that's really the thing that is usually not existing that folks sometimes have to hire for.
Okay. Ms. Princeton, then, Ms. Nelson.
Yeah, Ms. Aviles, thank you so much for taking this time to share this with us. I wish Councilmember Busori were here today, because if you recall, back in August, when we were talking about the budget, Mr. Busori had experience with the GBI work that was happening in Minneapolis, and spoke very highly of it. In terms of the, your description of a coalition of the willing, Councilmember Tao, Busori, and I were at a community meeting that was held up at Arlington Hills Lutheran Church about two weeks ago, that very much without, I, I don't know that the term GBI was used, but the meeting was hosted by the NAACP, the Black Ministerial Alliance, and law enforcement attended, and there was a tremendously diverse group of neighbors who attended. What was really positive about it, and what really resonated with what you said, is there was no finger pointing that was happening. Reverend Spence, who spoke, and is now working with our community action programs in both Minneapolis and St. Paul on this issue, described very much what you're talking about, that we know, we know that it's a small group, and it's not the way gangs used to be, where we could call the Crips, and we could call the Bloods, and we could say, knock it off, because we're going to start whatever, arresting you. It's a much more ad hoc, and, but I, the, the common ground piece that you talked about, that law enforcement communities, and then this small group of people themselves want this to work. I, I really feel very positive that we do have the right people thinking about this now, and I'm, I'm really excited about the meeting that we attended, Councilmember Tao. And they are planning another meeting with youth on November 14th, so we will get the word out about that, so that, that we're able to attend. But this has just been a great presentation. Thank you. It's very hopeful.
I'm glad.
Ms. Nelson.
Yeah, thank you so much. I feel glad to get to be a part of this exchange. I have some questions about, well, some potential issues I foresee. So the first is just the, the idea of accountability, and how I think deep accountability is actually like two parties that are consenting in the accountability relationship, and like, if that consent doesn't happen on either side with trust, one party trying to like enforce on the other accountability that wasn't like consented to or talked about often doesn't go very well. And that's like on a macro scale, that's on an individual, like people we've all like known before scale, right? So in the context of like group violence and group accountability, how, how do you successfully create that dynamic when there are histories of communities that are overpoliced or are policed unfairly, and then you're trying to rectify that, but also like activate the group dynamic that is sort of part of this? So that's sort of my first set of questions. And then within that is sort of an additional question, which I think has been touched on a little, which is, who gets to choose who's in the group? Because if you can't define that well, and then you can't define like the, the actual mutually agreed-upon accountability, I am worried about a potential unintended consequence of worsening the dynamics we desperately want to fix and need to fix to solve this. So I hope my question makes sense.
Yeah.
I'm coming from a place of wanting to understand this better, of wanting to be able to work with this most targeted group like you talked about. But that's, I'd like to hear more about that and what communities have learned, if that makes sense.
Yeah, so I'll start with your set. It's a really, really good questions, and I'll start with the second one, which is, I love when people queue me up to say this, because I feel like it gets misunderstood a lot. Nobody needs a group or gang database to do this, and we are firmly in opposition to them at the National Network. We don't, number one, you don't need them for public safety. Number two, they tend to perpetuate at best inequities and at worst abuses in, in the way folks are treated by systems across the board, right? So the way this works in terms of identifying and defining who's in the groups is based on incidents of violence, right? So in practice, once cities are doing this, this usually looks like a meeting once a week or so with key, we do go to, we do put, sort of acknowledge that law enforcement tends to be the first among equals here, because this is their job, right? Officers are responsible in most cities for knowing who's involved in violence and for, for having that information based on previous acts of violence that have been committed and their investigative efforts there, right? So it's not, it's not perfect, and some of the cities we work with are doing really interesting work around figuring out how to bring non-law enforcement voices into that conversation. But I'll be frank with you and say that, that's a law enforcement role in this model. But the way this looks in practice is that folks sit around a table somewhat like this once a week, and talk about every incident of violence that's occurred since the last meeting. Not from a perspective of trying to solve it or create a fact pattern for an arrest, that's important, and departments already do that, and we don't need to worry about, we don't need to worry about that. But from a perspective of understanding, what happened? What happened? Why did it happen? Forget if we can prove it, what do we know? Because we always, we always know, good law enforcement, no, good probation officers, good frontline police officers have some sense of... of, "Well, we think this happened because that group actually shot at this group last week, and we've been worried that this retaliation was going to happen. And the victim in that shooting was this guy's brother, and we think he shot at the person he thinks." Can we prove that? No. But do we think we understand what happened? Yes. And then the question is, if this is going to, if this is an incident that pushes this group into feeling like, okay, this group's been really violent lately, we might want to take this focused attention approach on them. It's starting with the person that law enforcement believes was responsible, and doing real-time research to understand who's this person hanging out with right now. And that literally looks like calling street outreach workers, if you've got them, to say, "We want to understand more about what this guy's involved with. Do you recognize his name? Do you know who he hangs out with?" Some street outreach workers aren't comfortable doing that. That happens in cities that have really invested in building a trusting relationship and have made outreach workers part of this approach. It also involves social media. It involves debriefings in the context of other arrests. It involves bringing in officers who might know that family or have been involved in investigations historically to say, "Who does he associate with?" Right? And we build the group out in real time. And we really think of it as, right, the point of focusing on the group is that groups influence each other. We all have groups of people who influence our behavior. Everyone I'm friends with on Facebook is not my group, right? If you want to change my behavior, there are five or six people that you want to talk to, right, who actually have influence over me. So the first step in understanding the groups is normalizing that real-time information sharing across the public safety stakeholders who are responsible for producing safety, right? And that does tend to start with law enforcement. And then, once you've completed that focus on that group, or you've delivered the message, if that's what you were going to do, then the slate sort of gets wiped clean. And the next time that an incident happens, that information lives in people's heads. It's part of their professional knowledge and professional responsibility in doing their work. We don't need to write it down, and sometimes it really hurts when we do, because then it becomes stagnant and it gets hard to get rid of. And these dynamics change so frequently that we really run the risk of talking to the wrong people if we're relying on things like databases. So that's one part of your question. Does that get to your question?
It helps me get a little more understanding of what the mapping looks like. And part of my question comes from a lot of the incidents that we've seen in the last several weeks that we've been grappling with as a community involve very young people, involve youth who may or may not have any kind of previous record, and who are like on the verge of reaching that event horizon. That's very hard to come back from. There were two shootings, there was a shooting over the weekend, and one of the people involved is 16, and then we've heard 15, 19. I mean, when you talked about an earlier example that said, "We can do a call-in in a way because of probation and other mechanisms."
Juvenile's are different.
How do you deal with and work with a group mindfully in a way that doesn't overcriminalize that group, but is acknowledging of the extremes to which they're increasingly resorting, knowing that those are amorphous groups that kind of change and shift and might not feel accountable to law enforcement because of a whole range of other reasons? So I think it's just very complex. It gets down to a very human level. But understanding some of the things that have been undertaken helps me get my head around the approach a little more. But I still, yeah. And we can talk more about it.
Yeah, I have cards, and President Brenman has my contact information. So this is a complex conversation, of course. So please, I welcome that conversation in more depth. The other question you asked was, I'm sorry, I've lost the first one.
I think it was actually more like, who chooses who's in the group? How do you actually like set the accountability dynamic?
So if I may, just for a moment, on the accountability mechanism is, so that's why the communication mechanisms are so important, is that we, people can't be deterred by what they don't know. They can't be held accountable to standards that they don't know other people have for them. So that intentional communication is designed to provide folks who are involved in the most serious violence, or in groups that are involved in the most serious violence, with information ahead of time about what their community expects of them, which is not to become a model citizen, right? That's not the standard we're holding ourselves to. The standard is stop shooting, right? And if you would like support, then the support is available. That's unconditional. You don't have to stop shooting to get the support. Support and outreach does not check you for warrants. Social services don't call the police on people who walk in to say, "Hey, is this guy like an upstanding citizen before I serve him?" That's not the role, right? So that is an open-ended offer. Anybody who wants help should get help in this approach. And same thing, anyone who is involved in shooting and homicides as a member of a violent group should know that law enforcement is, because the community is asking them to, to create public safety, is going to focus on groups when groups are involved in violence. So we believe really strongly, people can't be deterred by what they don't know. They can't be accountable to things that they don't understand. And just, you mentioned this, and often, always, in the cities we work with, one of the first speakers in that conversation, particularly when we do it in a room with a lot of folks from different groups, is the chief of police. And that message, I mean, it's a spectrum. It depends on what the chief is comfortable saying. Different chiefs are different. But I would say it is more common now than not for the chief to get up and say, "What we have been doing has not kept you safe," right? And to acknowledge, "If what we were doing was working, I would not be here on a Tuesday night talking to you guys. We are doing things differently now, and we want you to stay alive and to stay safe, and we think it is only fair for you to have information about how we're going to approach violence." And I've heard chiefs say, make that a formal apology, and say, "I'm sorry. We thought we were doing right when we policed the way we policed. We know now that we really hurt your community, and we're sorry, and we're not going to do that anymore." That's not every chief, but it's, the format creates an opportunity for systems partners to acknowledge what the guys know is true. They know they're not safe. They know that services haven't worked for them. So I think that, from the sort of truth-telling and accountability perspective, that this framework creates opportunities to have those conversations at the pace that community members and systems actors are ready to have them.
I think, Ms. Avalas, when we talked, the thing that really struck me was that, in some ways, it gives people cover. It's like, I don't want to do this, but now the police were like, "You can't. We're watching you." And then it's like, "Look, I'd do it if I could, but I can't." It gives people a cover.
We call that an honorable exit. Group members hate violence. These are guys who have lost friends and family. They can't leave their houses without feeling unsafe. They can't get jobs because they have felony convictions. They put themselves in really precarious situations all the time. They know they're hurting the people around them. And there's this social science concept called pluralistic ignorance, which is, everybody in a group thinks, that everybody in the group thinks something that no one in the group actually thinks. And it creates a dynamic that makes it really hard for people to step back from situations that even they might personally disagree with, because we are all beholden to the people we're friends with, right? We all want to fit in. We all want to conform. And those pure norms are really, really strong. And when we can create a circumstance that says to folks, you know, that gives people room to say to each other, "Love to do that drive-by shooting. Did you see what happened to the group that did the last one? I don't, like, we don't want that. Let's cool things down." And that cover has turned out to give folks room to step back in ways that otherwise are really, really hard for them to do.
I do, Mr. Tao has a question, and I also want to make sure you don't miss your flight.
I appreciate that.
So if we, after, we'll have Mr. Tao's question, and then obviously, you're continuing to do your work in Minneapolis, and you're in conversations here with our law enforcement, the county attorney, the mayor's office. And I think the goal here was to make sure that we're up to speed on this initiative, because I know that we're all looking for these approaches. So I think that we can continue to dig in deeper on the specific questions as we move into the future. This is mostly an introduction. So, Mr. Tao.
Thank you, Council President. I think there was one sly in there that you said that economic situation didn't have anything to do with the violence. And so I just, I acknowledge that, but I also think that we're not, I hope that we're not minimizing that social economic status doesn't have, because I think it does, right? And so it leads to folks being desperate, stressed, and then it leads to violence and different trauma. And so I was encouraged that you also showed that there is multiple approach. And so addressing, right? So I think it's important to address the violence that it is currently now in the present, but also acknowledging the cause, the root cause. And so my question would be, in those direct contact per incident, are there data to show what kind of risks or exposure do we present to our workers or members of the community that are having these contacts? Were there any retaliation against them? I think this is important for folks who care and want to make a difference and work with folks who are violent. And then the other piece was, when we're interacting with the folks who are committing violence, what are some of the way out for them that has been successful? I think those data are interesting.
Yeah, absolutely. So, starting with your last question, the things that have turned out to actually be the kind of support that resonates with this population are things like being able to relocate them, being able to say, to hear someone when they're saying, "I'm not safe right now. I can't go home because I'm worried they'll shoot up the house if they think I'm in it, and my mom lives there. And if I just had 65 bucks for a bus ticket, I could go stay with extended family, you know, wherever, for three or four days. And I don't have $65, and so I can't make myself safe." Traditional social services are not set up for that kind of request. They're just not. That's not what state and federal grant dollars for social services are set up to provide. Good social service agencies often find ways to provide that, but it's not systematized, right? So things like that help. We've seen a lot of the cities we work with start essentially peer-to-peer support groups. There was sort of a formal way of thinking about this called Gangsters Anonymous that cities have experimented with, but essentially a recognition that you can't tell people not to hang out with their friends, right? If the options are get out of the group, then it's stay home with the doors locked and the blinds drawn and hope people think you're out of town. So setting up peer-to-peer support groups so that guys who are trying to change their behavior have a place to go and new social relationships with people who understand what they're going through and maybe have been there and done that and can mentor them or even sort of sponsor them, that's turned out to be a way of helping address trauma and support people in their efforts to change their behavior that are more realistic and supportive than saying, you know, "You just can't hang out with those guys anymore, and if we see you around them, you know, that's going to be a problem." Connecting people to traditional services when they're ready has been really important. Affirmative outreach, so the recognition that if we expect this population to show up at 9:00 AM for an intake where they have to fill out four pages of paperwork, they're not going to do it, because it's not safe for them to go to that building because it's in a neighborhood that they don't want to be in. And even if the neighborhood's okay, the bus they have to take to get there is problematic and makes them feel unsafe. They often can't get up at 9:00 AM in the morning. They're just not used to it. And that, if we expect them to do that, we're setting them up for failure. And they don't want to admit that maybe they don't read that well. So they don't want to fill out the paperwork, right? So working with street outreach workers who have the credibility to initiate those conversations and do intakes in different kinds of settings that are actually, are more successful in creating a legitimate pathway, that guys actually feel like, "Okay, this is for me," right? "This meets me where I'm at, and it gives me a way to connect with what I need that doesn't inadvertently create all these barriers." So that's, those are the kinds of approaches that we've been experimenting with, really more the last four or five years, that so far have felt like a much better fit. And we've seen service uptake go up significantly once we began thinking about social services that way. You also made a point about the socioeconomic dynamic and the way that contributes to violence. And I just, that's exactly right. What I meant when I said, "The money doesn't drive the violence," was there's this sort of myth floating around that group dynamics are all over, you know, "You're selling on my drug turf," or, you know, "Your activities with your group are taking money out of the pocket of my group." And that, when we break the incidents down, that just does not seem to be the case in most of the incidents. It doesn't mean that the stress of endemic poverty isn't a driver behind some of the reasons guys are kind of involved in these groups at all. That's absolutely right. It just means that if we tackle this as an economic problem or a problem that's fueled by the drug trade, we miss the fact that almost all these incidents are driven by interpersonal dynamics and perceptions of respect and kind of a street code that normalizes retaliation and violence. And that just doesn't, if we approach it as, "Well, if we just crack down on the drug trade, then this won't happen," we're kind of missing the underlying dynamic. And you had one more question, and I've forgotten what it was.
I think it was per incident?
Yes. So the good news here is that we have been doing these meetings in cities for 20 years all over the country and the world. There has never been an incident of someone getting, it's one call-in in that whole history where a very minor fight broke out once it was over. And when we talked with folks afterwards, they said, "We think that fight was brewing for a long time. We actually think they did it here because they knew we would break it up instantly, and that was a safer situation for folks than if that tension had perpetuated out into the street." Who knows if that's true? But we do about four calls-a-year in every city that we work with, and there's never been an incident of violence. Street outreach workers and folks who do home visits, probation and parole officers, our kind of organizational posture has just been to treat those people as the professionals they are and say, "This is the population you work with." Street outreach workers are usually doing this before they're getting paid, right? This is a calling. So they know the communities. They know the guys. They know how to keep themselves safe. And we think of our role when we're working with cities to say, to whoever's running the project, "Make sure you're talking to them about how they're keeping themselves safe. So in case they're not thinking about it that way, we can help them figure out how to be mindful of their own safety." But that's where, I'm not a cop. Nobody who works at our organization is either an outreach worker or law enforcement. So that's where we really defer to communities to say, "These are your engagements. These are your conversations. Safety is paramount." That's the whole point of these sorts of approaches, is to keep people safe. So we have to be mindful of that.
So I encourage all my colleagues to reach out to Ms. Avalas. There's so, like, when I met with you in my office, I felt like we could have spent three hours. There are so many questions I had, and just, it's so helpful and informative. And the approach just feels really thoughtful and open-minded, and obviously, the data is showing that it's effective as well. So I'm excited to continue the conversation and continue working with you. We have your contact information, and we will be reaching out. Thank you so much for making time.
Thank you for making time and letting me take so much time. And please do, we are a research organization. We love talking about this to anyone who has any questions ever. So please don't hesitate to reach out if you or your staffs just have open-ended questions. I would love that conversation. Thank you so much.
Wonderful. Thank you so much.
Consent agenda items 1 through 12 are before you for your consideration.
Is there anything on consent to be taken separately? I know we are pulling item number three, and item...
Five and six.
Five and six. Item three, five and six. All right. Okay, we're switched, this is unusual, just switching gears back. All right. So we'll remove those three items, and Mr. Tao moves the balance of the consent agenda. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion prevails.
Six in favor, no one opposed. The consent agenda is adopted as amended. Item number three, Resolution 19-1870, Committing to Advocating for the Renewable Equitable and Locally Produced Energy Commitments expressed in the Climate Action and Resilience Plan and to opposing proposed new fossil fuel energy infrastructure.
Ms. Prince.
Yes, I would like to move a two-week layover on this. The community folks from St. Paul 350 and Excel are going to be getting together to discuss it and maybe make some modifications.
Great. And it sounded to me like the, that it was very productive conversations where there's some, the Climate 350 group is newer on the scene, and there were some maybe ways that we could increase the push behind the resolution in some places where maybe it would make more sense to redirect. And so we're going to give it two weeks?
Two weeks.
Okay. Ms. Prince moves a two-week layover. Is there any more conversation on that motion? Seeing that, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion prevails.
Six in favor, no one opposed. The resolution is laid over to November 6. Item number five, Resolution 19-1760, Authorizing the Negotiation and Execution of Solar Garden Subscription Agreements for Up to 600 Kilowatts with Novel Energy Solutions LLC.
Ms. Prince.
Again, this was something that I had some questions about, and I talked to Mr. Gebel and Mr. Stark, and I thought it would be great if we could have a very brief staff report from Mr. Gebel about this great new initiative.
Welcome.
Good. Thank you. Good afternoon, Council President Brenman and council members. My name is Jim Gebel. I am the energy coordinator for the city. I reside in real estate under the OFS group. So if you need me, that's where you can find me. I thought I'd share though background information regarding the opportunity we have to add another solar garden to the city's portfolio. I thought before doing that, I'd probably should just give you a quick recap of where we have been. Presently, we are subscribers to two community solar gardens. Both of those are located in Scandia, Minnesota, and we receive about 2.6 megawatts of power from those two gardens. That represents about 9% of the city's total of 30 megawatts of electric power that we use. So just a little perspective there. Those gardens... Those gardens have been in production for about eighteen months. The power goes to twelve different city-owned facilities. Savings from those two gardens and those twelve facilities have been about sixty thousand dollars, just pure savings because of the contract that we have that gives us a one cent, a one penny credit for every kilowatt hour that we purchase from that, from those two community solar gardens. What we have today is Novell Energy. They, we have an opportunity to purchase, subscribe to six hundred thousand kilowatts of renewable energy. That would bring our total for the city to about three-point-one megawatts, or a little over ten percent purchases of renewable energy. The current subscribers that are in the Novell Energy Garden, the city of Afton and the Department of Transportation from the state of Minnesota are the two main ones. That garden will not come online until late the second half of 2020, even though we need to subscribe ahead of time for these. Lastly, I guess I'd just like to say that the community solar gardens, we feel strongly about. It's a great way for the city to purchase renewable energy for specific prices over a twenty-five-year period. There are no upfront costs to community solar gardens, there are no operational costs incurred by us over those twenty-five years, and there are no maintenance fees associated with those gardens over that lifetime, again, of twenty-five years. So, really, it's just a hedge, if you will, of pricing for our electric power usage and utility costs for the foreseeable future. So, that's all I have. If there's any questions, I'd be happy to answer them.
Are there any questions? All right, thank you so much.
Good. Thank you.
Ms. Prince.
I appreciate that Mr. Giebel is a tremendous resource to the city who, as he just described, is saving us a considerable amount of money with renewable energy. So, I appreciate his being willing to be here this afternoon, so I would like to move approval.
Ms. Prince moves approval. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion prevails.
Five in favor, no one opposed. The resolution is adopted. Item number six, Resolution nineteen dash eighteen fifty-one, Consent to the Issuance of Up to Five Million Five Hundred Thousand Dollars of General Obligation Refunding Bonds by the Port Authority of the City.
Ms. Prince.
Yeah, again, you know, when I see a big number like five-point-five million of GO bonds on the agenda, I thought I'd scratch the surface and see exactly what's happening. And again, I talked to Mr. Solomon, who frequently brings us good news in this area, so I asked if he'd be willing to just say a few words about this item.
Welcome.
Thank you, Council President Brenmoen and council members. Mike Solomon from the Office of Financial Services. The item before you today is consenting to the Port Authority Board's action that they took at their meeting yesterday. It allows us to move forward with the refinancing of the Series two thousand nine bonds that originally financed the Beacon's bluff redevelopment at the original, the old three-M site. We're moving forward with the pricing in mid-November, but we expect debt service savings of five-hundred to six-hundred thousand dollars, or almost ten percent, over the ten-year life. And this would reduce the levy need for the port's GO debt levy annually going forward. You know, it's a lot of work to bring these forward, so thank you to our colleagues at the Port Authority and then Sarah Brown on our Treasury staff that does all of the real work associated with these issuances.
Thank you. Is there any questions? All right, thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Tolbert moves approval. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion prevails.
Six in favor, no one opposed. The resolution is adopted. Item number thirteen, Final Adoption of Ordinance nineteen dash fifty-nine, Amending the zoning map as recommended in the Stryker Avenue zoning study.
This is before us for final adoption. Is there any final discussion on this item? Seeing none, Ms. Naker moves approval. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion prevails.
Six in favor, no one opposed. The ordinance is adopted. Item number fourteen, Final Adoption of Ordinance nineteen dash sixty-one, Amending Chapter one fifty-two of a Legislative Code permitting the city engineer to set speed limits on roads under the city's jurisdiction.
And this is also before us for final adoption? Is there any final discussion on this item? Ms. Nelson.
I would just like to say thank you to the administration and to everyone here in support. We are taking swift action and making use of a new law that's going to help us slow down cars on our city roads. I think that's a huge and desperately needed thing, and so I think this is the first step on that journey, and I know we're talking in the budget about how to resource the many-piece operation it takes, but I just am appreciative to get to move this forward today, so I wanted to say thanks to all involved with making it happen.
Anything else? All right. Seeing none, Ms. Nelson moves approval. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion prevails.
Six in favor, no one opposed. The ordinance is adopted. Item number fifteen, Final Adoption of Ordinance nineteen dash sixty-two, Amending Sections three seventy-three-point-oh-one and three seventy-three-point-eight of this Legislative Code pertaining to transportation network company definitions to include rented or leased vehicles and allow automobile rental companies to make rental vehicles available to TNC-endorsed drivers.
Any final discussion on this item? Seeing none, Mr. Tolbert moves approval. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion prevails.
Six in favor, no one opposed. The ordinance is adopted. Item number sixteen, Second Reading of Ordinance nineteen dash sixty-three, Granting the Application of Joseph and Nancy Schumacher to Rezone Property at Three Thirty Prior Avenue North from O.S. Office Service to RT One Residential, and Amending Chapter sixty of the Legislative Code pertaining to the zoning map. This ordinance is laid over to November sixth for third reading public hearing. Item number seventeen, Second Reading of Ordinance nineteen dash sixty-seven, Amending Section two-twenty-point-oh-five of the Legislative Code to Set Rates for Base Level Garbage Service to be Effective January first, 2020. This ordinance is laid over to November sixth for third reading public hearing. Item number eighteen, Second Reading of Ordinance nineteen dash sixty-eight, Amending Chapter eighty-eight of the Legislative Code pertaining to Water Code Meters by Removing Section eighty-eight-point-ten-G in its entirety. This ordinance is laid over to November sixth for third reading public hearing. Item number nineteen, First Reading of Ordinance nineteen dash sixty-nine, Amending Section one oh-five-point-oh-four of the Legislative Code to Aid Construction of Boulevard Rain Gardens. This ordinance is laid over to November sixth for second reading. Item number twenty, Resolution Public Hearing nineteen dash three fifty-five, Approving the Application of Monster Series LLC Monster-Event for Sound Level Variances for Amplified Sound on October twenty-sixth at five locations.
Stop there. Oh, sorry. Okay. This is a public hearing? Is there anyone here to speak to this item? Seeing none, Ms. Naker moves to close the public hearing and approve. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion prevails.
Six in favor, no one opposed. The public hearing is closed, and the resolution is adopted. Item number twenty-one, Resolution Public Hearing nineteen dash three fifty-six, Approving the Application of Anderson Race Management for Sound Level Variants for Amplified Sound During the Chocoholic-Frolic, Five-K, Ten-K, and Kids Run and Walk on November second at Harriet Island.
This is a public hearing? Is there anyone here to speak to this item? Seeing none, Ms. Naker moves to close the public hearing and approve. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion prevails.
Six in favor, no one opposed. The public hearing is closed, and the resolution is adopted. Item number twenty-two has been withdrawn.
Boo.
Legislative hearing consent agenda items twenty-three through thirty-two are before you for your consideration.
Good afternoon, Ms. Mormon.
Good afternoon, Council President, council members. I am aware of one party who wishes to testify, another we resolved the matter in the hallway, and the item would be number twenty-three, please.
Item number twenty-three?
Yes.
RLHVO nineteen dash forty-three, Appeal of Linda Parker to a Notice of Condemnation Unfit for Human Habitation Order to Vacate at six-oh-three Edmund Avenue.
Council President Brenmoen, council members, I know that there are people in the hallway who will be working their way in during the next minute or two. The case that I'm putting in front of you today is extremely difficult. What we're looking at is a condemnation and order to vacate, an appeal of that. The condemnation order to vacate was issued on October fourth with a vacate date of October seventeenth. That order was appealed, and I heard the case last week. It's my recommendation to the council to deny the appeal on the condemnation and grant an extension on the vacate date to Monday, October twenty-eighth. Just a little bit to cover things you already are aware of, but to put, not to find, a condemnation is really a description of conditions that make a place unfit for human habitation. It's not the order to vacate. It is, it is a characterization of what those items are, and those are embedded in the orders that were appealed. The order to vacate itself is how we effectuate the necessary action if some place is unfit for human habitation. It's saying that is the day by which people have to not be living there anymore. The physical problems with the property we're talking about today are not dissimilar to a case that you heard a couple months ago. We have significant roof problems at this particular property. These are not new problems. They have been causing water infiltration into the house for what I would imagine is years. There is, you can see, I have a photo up right now just showing a picture of the roof, which, what I would point out in this that's very, that is obvious, is that there's curling of shingles. I don't have the best picture in the world to show you large, but if you looked at this in your computer, you could make it bigger, is at the base of the chimney, there is some mortar missing. The diagnosis of that by staff is that that chimney is listing, that the chimney is in danger of falling. This means two things. One, that the chimney is not properly venting the fuel-burning equipment. Two, that if the chimney falls, that it could go through the roof of the house itself, which is already compromised, or it could fall onto the neighboring property or damage someone or something on the ground. Those things could also happen together. The chimney could damage the house and damage other places. Within the house itself, and you've got these pictures in your record, you can see that there is significant damage to the plaster within, and that there's holes and infiltrations, I would say, throughout. I have a picture here that you can kind of see how the, the lathe is exposed as the plaster has fallen away. There have been some efforts to repair this, and they have been, I would characterize as haphazard kinds of repairs. You can see here a piece of sheet rock that is propped up against the ceiling area, and well, there's another place of exposed lathe and breaking plaster. And here in this photograph, you can see an effort to patch the ceiling area on the second floor. The long-term deferred maintenance that this property has experienced along with the water damage leaves me concerned, not just for the things that were identified in this inspection that's immediately in front of you, but also what is underneath the surface, whether it's mold, whether it's compromised electrical systems or HVAC systems. I think that those are important considerations as well. I can tell you in speaking with county staff that they are also concerned about even being able to contract somebody to remove the chimney to decrease its danger, and that's because, well, first of all, it's really hard to get masonry contractors out right now at all. And second of all, there's no confidence in being able to stand on the roof to do the repair, which complicates access to the chimney issues. What, a couple more things. I have almost never had a case where I have had so many people in government, in social service agencies, and community organizations who have been so caring and reaching out to help with the brothers who live in this location. They are seniors, they are self-described as being disabled. They have lived in this house, which was their mother's house, and they lost it through tax forfeiture in August, so it is now a property that belongs to the state of Minnesota. So, that's kind of the backdrop of what's going on and impacting the ability to take fast action on doing this work, which is actually probably long-term work, no matter who's swinging the hammer. I will also say there is, this is tax forfeited, I explained that. There is also a process by which the occupants, the people who have owned it, the Pettiford brothers, can repurchase the property from the state of Minnesota. And in fact, they've made application to do exactly that, and the county board will be considering that. On your consent agenda today was a resolution, which is the city council's endorsement of the repurchase application. So, as you know, when repurchase applications are made, the county asks for the city's input, looking at the past five years of code enforcement and police activity at a property, and whether or not we would characterize it as a municipal problem. This is not a municipal problem. This is something that the city cleanly is recommending to allow for repurchase. In my conversations with county staff, there is a very strong will to fast-track this application for repurchase. In the best of all scenarios, it would be on the county board agenda November nineteenth. If that doesn't quite work out, it would be the following week on the twenty-sixth. The brothers would be able to repurchase the property as soon as the following day. I should note that the amount that's due and owing is about five thousand dollars. What's good in one way about how the county handles this is that the repurchase could be financed, and so it can be financed over a period of ten years, so that five thousand dollars that's due and owing, if they're approved for repurchase, could amount to monthly payments that are really quite modest while the situation is sorted out, so that resources that may be available now can be channeled towards handling the housing crisis that is happening right now. I'm happy to answer any questions that you have on this.
I don't have any questions. Mr. Tom.
Just a quick question. Are the two brothers currently living in the property?
I don't know. My understa, in the legislative hearing, my recommendation that they heard was that the property did not need to be vacated until October twenty-eighth, and so it was my expectation at the conclusion of that hearing that they would continue to be there through October twenty-eighth. The House Calls Program was present in the legislative hearing and was making available right away the opportunity for at least five nights of hotel vouchers to be a bridge towards a potential lease starting on November first.
Thank you.
All right, thank you, and I appreciate understanding the context of the issue in front of us and also separating that from the condemnation. It sounds like we've got a lot of folks who are working in the support piece of this and making sure that this property, there's an opportunity to repurchase it, that the brothers will have a place to stay. But from what you're describing, we're talking about the condemnation of a building that has a potential chimney that could fall over, that's not venting properly, and a roof that's not stable. And the concern is when people are sleeping in those homes, the risk of someone getting hurt, injured, or killed is high. So, those are the two things, I think, that we're, and we're looking at the condemnation piece of this and recognizing that there's an involved conversation and lots of folks involved on the support side. Okay. Any other questions for Ms. Mormon?
Okay. Well, this is a public hearing. It is, we have five minutes on our clock to hear perspective from the appellant on this matter and on the recommendation of the legislative hearing officer. And I just point out the time mostly because people are sharing the time, I want to make sure that we know how.
I want to make sure that we know how, like, when I, I don't want to cut you off, but I want to make sure everyone gets a chance to share their thoughts. Welcome.
Hello. My name is Samantha Wright. I'm here on behalf of Wesley Pettiford. He's my uncle. He can't be here today right now because he is at dialysis. He goes to dialysis Monday, Wednesday, Friday from 8:00 a.m. to 6:00 p.m. He also, if he was here, wouldn't be able to say much to you because he is nonverbal. He lost his voice around 40 years old. He became disabled in 2011 with a heart condition. He does have, I think my mother said it was stents in his heart. He paid off his house in full in 2012. His brother Edgar is also disabled. He, he hasn't been able to go to the doctor because he doesn't have sufficient health insurance, but he is going blind. You can see it. He's got really bad cataracts. He can't see. His diabetes has caused him to have neuropathy and a few other things. However, we, I wanted to let you guys know that we do have a lot of help right now. Thanks to the Community Stabilization Project, they opened up a lot of resources for us. The county commissioner and I were just speaking in the hallway, and she has made a plan for them for about a week or two up until the 1st of November to have hotels stay until we can find them something for long-term. Because Neighborhood Works is a program who also is willing to work with Ramsey County while it's technically in their name to do the work that needs to be done, or get it started at least. We also have a whole lot of family now involved that are trying to help keep up with everything. We are also getting him a social worker through Ramsey County and trying to get him a Caddy waiver to help with co-pays for dialysis, which is what happened in the situation. My uncle thought paying taxes, you know, he needs some help. So he thought paying taxes was like a medical bill as long as he was paying on it, you know, he was safe. He didn't know he had to pay at the end of each year full. And then, yeah, I just want to, you know, let you guys know that we definitely need to start implementing more community help for people who are disabled and, you know, get in these situations. And like, make it aware to the public, not, you know, it depends on who you know type thing. So I don't want to take up all the time. So if you have questions for me, I don't know if I missed anything. No questions? Okay.
Thank you very much. And I didn't say this, but if you could just sign in at the ledger there on the side. Yep, that would be great. Welcome.
Hello. Thank you for taking, being able to take this time. My name is Metrick Giles, and I'm the co-director for the Community Stabilization Project. So I'm looking at this whole process, and the guiding rule that we use at Community Stabilization Project is the responsibility of doing good is to do no harm or the least harm. So we started with a process with the county that was very harmful that even started this process of the forfeiture. And we did not have the forfeiture process, we would not be before you today. Ramsey County has stepped up and said, well, let's see what we can do to deal with the situation, but also look at our process that's in place. I have two flyers here. Safe Housing, Community Feedback Sessions, Join the Conversations About Stable, Accessible, Fair, and Equitable Housing in St. Paul. I have another one. Your Voice Matters. What do you want our future community to look like and feel like? Now, we could have all these meetings, and after all these meetings, if we just keep saying, well, the rules we have in place is what we have to abide by, and say that the people had to fix themselves to the systems instead of systems being developed, regenerated, that can work for the people in our communities, all this is going to mean a crap, nothing at all. And that's what we have today. We have all these people working together, systems. And I'm very proud, especially of Ramsey County. Ramsey County has jumped up and said, hey, we want to make sure that we aren't just talking about policies and rules. We're looking at people. Now, after we did all this, we asked the question, and this is part of what we need you to address, because you're here to set up rules and policies. Is that right? We have a policy that says, if this house is condemned tomorrow after the condemnation, it will be a vacant house. Do anybody know about vacant house? If you don't, I don't have the time to explain to you. It's not a good thing. It's not a good thing. And it's in violation of the responsibility of doing good is not to do harm or any harm. So there's a lot of things I have to say. What I want to say is, City of St. Paul, Ramsey County, we need you to be intersectional and working on behalf of the people. Because right now, we definitely, with all the good work that is going to happen, we do not want this house to be a vacant house. And what I was told, well, it's going to become a vacant house, and then we can appeal the process. No, that might have worked. You know what vacant houses did back in our communities, Frog Town, Summit University? It created over 2,000 vacant lots. And that might, that might have worked good for then. It doesn't work for right now. So I'm asking you to be responsible, not to impose or allow that vacant house notice to be connected with this condemnation. The condemnation is one thing. It being automatically like, we have to do this, and this is what we're being told, we have to make it a vacant house, that will cause a hardship and a burden. So however you get back to it, start changing some of these policies. Thank you.
Thank you. And please be sure to sign in. Thank you. Okay, is there, well, I guess we're over time. So Mr. Tao moves to close the public hearing. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion prevails. Mr. Tao.
Thank you. And thanks for coming down here, all the supporter in Ramsey County and members of the community. And Metrick, I just have a question for you. So, and thank you for your leadership. I know you've been working really hard to stop displacement in Frog Town and Ward 1. I appreciate that.
Thank you.
So I guess, you know, so this is a really important issue because what I'm trying to understand is if we don't, if we don't do the condemnation, what, what are you recommending? Because you are a caring leader, and whoever, whether it's the two brothers that's moving back in there, or whoever is moving back in there, when, when the condemnation then create an opportunity where the developers or whoever the partnership is to make sure that the home is equitable, that it's a place that's livable, that's safe? I guess.
So we, we want that also. We want it to be a safe house, and a safe place, livable place, and space. What we don't want is the impact of the present policy that says when we declare a condemnation, that it immediately goes into the vacant house status. And we have Deputy Director Travis here and Marsha to explain that. That vacant house status, it creates a tremendous burden. Like, a person could have their water heater red-tagged, and then it doesn't get fixed for so long. They report it back to the, to the DSI, Department of Safety and Inspections. And then the safety inspections come over and take a look at that and do a condemnation, and then they see a couple of other violations. Now that whole house has to be totally rehabbed. You know, it's not, we started out with just a water heater. This thing that happened here that was actually, if we had a process that was set up to hear to what Samantha said, that when someone comes before any city division, that there was a navigation process that was attached, that we were working collectively together, and we created, instead of an adversarial system that is based on fines and violations only, that we, we have a process that is complementary to having a livable, safe space for everyone. So that we really get to this. You know, we cannot keep having these meetings and then have policies that we're still working off of that doesn't work for the people. Did I answer your question? I could go in details, but they, they have a working budget with Neighbor Works. I don't know what that budget is. I didn't look at, but they have that already on paper. Neighbor Works is committed to working with them. If they get that vacant house status, it's going to double. It's going to double. And that, and that's not what we're talking about. We, we're moving beyond safe, livable space. We're moving about a policy that is outdated over, you know, that is, that isn't even in the same space of why, why and when it was created. So let's look at why and what is the impact, you know? So we're in agreement, livable, safe space. What was really helpful in this case, I want to commend, I want, let me say this. I want to commend this process because what has happened repeatedly is DSI has gone into somebody's house in their unit and said, in the name of safety, in the middle of the winter, and put them outside on the street. And said, that's a safer place for you to be out on the street. In this case, DSI Director Savantis, he had made his, put time and energy in making sure that these people are housed. But we have to stop doing it individually. We have to start doing it systemically. And we're going to make a change.
Okay, thank you. Thank you. Mr. Tao.
Question for Ms. Mormon. Ms. Mormon, it, it, based on what we heard today, it looks like this is a situation where we have stakeholders, property owners, the county, everybody's coming together to find a solution that it's appropriate for, for the property owners. I'm just, I'm just curious, if they have already created that partnership, couldn't they not have a contract or agreement on the proceeding and so that we, we could approve their appeal? And not have to have it to go into condemnation?
Are you asking if they voluntarily vacate the property, can the condemnation order to vacate appeal be granted?
Right, right.
I would respond to that, that the order to vacate a property and the status of being unfit for human habitation is something that the city needs to have an enforcement mechanism for. So if there is someone there, and I'm not saying that the brothers would be there, but maybe a brother would move back in. Maybe somebody who's homeless would move in. That certainly happens with vacant buildings from time to time. How does the city respond to someone existing, living, sleeping in a condemned house? With a simple agreement, the city really has no teeth or ability to make sure that that house is not lived in until it's safe. With the order to vacate, there are, there's teeth to, to effectuate that.
Have we ever had a similar situation where we have granted appeal? That you think of?
This is really a very unique kind of a situation where we have, we have an owner, but the owner is the state of Minnesota. And the participation of the owner in the rehabilitation process, I think, hasn't been fully fleshed out yet and what that would look like. I'm hearing comments that maybe the county itself would contract with Neighbor Works to do the work. That would be outside of their process that they've used in the past. What has happened in the past is that when the property is sold back to the occupants on a contract for deed, that they would then become responsible for the repairs, and they could work with whomever they wanted to, Neighbor Works, anybody. So I don't know if that answers your question, but that, it is, it is so unique, and there are so many players, and there are so many different things going on.
Well, part of, part of, I think what I'm hearing you say is the property is owned by the state of Minnesota. It's not owned by the, by the brothers.
It has been owned by the state of Minnesota since the beginning of August.
So it's tax forfeited. So in order to do the work, like, having Ramsey County do that contracting work is like, probably really the only way to get a contractor to do it. Because the, the previous owners don't own the house. It's forfeited.
Right, okay. So I guess my question, my next question would be, if, are there any liability for the city if we grant their appeal and, you know, in the process, something happened, incident, because it's unfit for human habitation?
I am not a risk management staff person. I would say that the codes themselves speak to the responsibility of the public sector to maintain safety. The liability question, as I understand it, would be one that's more borne by the state of Minnesota and Ramsey County. But, and I would almost want to defer to, I do want to defer to the city attorney on the question of liability, if you're ready.
Councilmember Tao, liability is difficult to evaluate in a vacuum. What I can tell you is that if something did happen to these individuals, certainly the city could be joined in a lawsuit of some kind where we would sort out liability. That's certainly an open question.
Okay. All right, so here's my thoughts. Unless you want to also anything to add?
Ms. Nelson.
Sorry, I was just waiting on one question. So I would like to better understand a piece of what we heard, which is that voting on condemnation then puts it into vacant building status, which actually makes repairs more costly. Is that, where would that come from, and why would that be the case? Because I think a key part of this is wanting to make the repairs and do that in a costly manner. But why would the cost be driven up because of the status change?
Right now, the building has been condemned, and it has major code violations, which on its face means that it would become a category-two registered vacant building following the vacation of the building by the people who live there. That is the normal course of events on how policy works. When it's a category-two registered vacant building, in order to be reoccupied, the question is not addressing the immediate violations listed in the condemnation order. The question becomes, what is necessary to make this building minimally code compliant? So for example, when I brought up the question of the electrical systems possibly have been being compromised by water infiltration, that is something that would be evaluated by the four trades inspectors who go through the building to create a punch list. I think we are assuming that the work that would address the condemnation would look different than the work that would be necessary to address a code compliance inspection report. Other things affecting cost of the rehabilitation would be who is doing the rehabilitation. Specifically, if Ramsey County undertakes the rehabilitation, or if one of our traditional community development corporations undertakes the rehabilitation, their contracting, their subcontracting is governed by a whole set of laws and requirements that tend to drive costs up. And so what they might be picturing as a $70,000 project or a $50,000 project, given the contractors and given the potential additional items that they weren't intending to do, but might need to be done, they're putting that out there. It is the policy right now of the city to require that code compliance certificate in these kinds of situations. However, this is not the question that's in front of you today. The question would come forward in an appeal of the requirement that this be registered as a vacant building and a category-two. And so it is in the future in terms of simple repairs to make a place habitable. The county board was, or excuse me, I misstated that. County staff who were in the legislative hearing were really clear that if this were simply a water heater issue, they would be in there, they would replace it pending. they would be in there, they would replace it pending the resolution of the repurchase application. But it is a much larger issue and so they did not feel like they could commit the, what they're estimating to be tens of thousands of dollars anyway, just without knowing more, um, to do the work while still the ownership is in flux.
I, and I just, I want to agree with Mr. Giles' perspective of, you know, how do these things get to this point? I mean, a tax forfeiture takes years and years and years and years to happen. And I don't know how things don't get red flagged. If a chimney is, is tilting over, I don't know with all the, our, um, uh, community groups and our CDCs and our neighbors, how we, these things, I mean, if the roof is at, it, it just seems like we're, we do need to go further upstream so that we don't get to this point where we have to take these drastic measures. But what I'm hearing, and, and I'm committed to that. I know that one of the things we're working on with our Department of Safety and Inspections is program, looking at the way our, um, the way that we do enforcement and how it hurts and impacts people and how can we change that? So like on the systemic changes approach. And also, um, where we come into rental properties and just do the, uh, repairs and put it on property taxes rather than displacing people. And so those are ongoing, um, conversations that are happening right now. But I think to Ms. Mormon's point, um, what we're looking at is this particular, um, issue right now. And what I'm hearing is, um, that the repairs are going to be done by Neighbor Works Home Partners for Ramsey County. And so the cost is less, it's not to save the previous homeowners money. The cost is to create the safest, best long-term property, um, for the, for the folks that will, from what I'm understanding, have the, an opportunity to buy back the property for $5,000 financed over 20 years. Which is, sounds like the county and the, um, state and the, um, community stabilization proj- proj- project have come up with a really great plan there. And I also heard that Ramsey County is working to connect the brothers. I did, I didn't catch their last name. Linda Parker is not, is it a partner?
Pettiford?
Pettiford.
Pettiford. The Pettifords, um, with temporary housing both in, you know, interim in a hotel and then longer term. So there's a lot of support around them. So, I mean, so those are the things that I'm hearing and so I, um, I, I feel like we're, it, it does remind me of a conversation we had a few weeks back where we were talking about, um, the, the repairs and getting the repairs done in, uh, not a superficial way, but in a way that's long-lasting. I'm thinking back to the pictures we just saw with the roof collapsed and, um, boards propped up. I mean, some of the other things that you said, external, that are concerning to me about the safety of people who again, don't own the home. So, um, Ms. Mormon?
Um, I, I just wanted to quickly comment that, um, I haven't had a chance to talk in any depth with Ramsey County staff about their review process for working with Neighbor Works. I know this has been discussed. I don't know if anything's been finalized and so I wouldn't want to commit them to something that they were still negotiating or trying to figure out how it would work within their process. And the repayment time period, in my understanding, is a 10-year time period.
Thanks for the clarification.
I would like to commit that though, because they have committed themselves.
Okay.
And, you know, and, and also, as far as the $5,000, they have that $5,000. That's kind of like elementary. We're dealing with the system and process that won't even allow them to even make the payment of, of when they have the money. If they didn't have the money, CSP would put up the money. Because for us, the loss of that house is much more greater than our financial burdens. But the conversation that we're having here today, we're talking about the structure of the house, again, and all I hear the city talking about is racial equity, economic equity, you know, environmental justice. And to do this, keep this system the way you're going to do it right now is totally in contradiction to that process. Because if you look at who's impacted, who is impacted in the past and who's being impacted right now, we're talking about people who are economically marginalized through a system that has long-term, I'm glad you addressed. Why wasn't this, any of this addressed prior to this?
Right.
You know, and now that we, that we're going to do it, we're going to squash it? No. Don't just keep talking about racial equity and economic equity and environmental justice and everything and then just sit down here and make decisions. So I'm hoping your consensus isn't just about equity is actionable and it's how it impacts all people.
Okay. And we did, we're closed, the public hearing is closed and I would, um, look to Mr. Tao for, uh, direction on this item.
Thank you. So here's my thoughts. The situation that we are in today, um, which, to me, it seemed like the result of deferred maintenance for whatever reason has led us to this. And, and I hear the concern about the racial equity. And I think the rest of the council hears that and has been an important priorities, uh, on the council, especially around our work around displacement and creating housing options for, uh, the city of St. Paul. I think, I think that the best, the best way forward is that the human lives is more important than, um, the cost, right? And so for us to make that policy change of granting the appeal, um, would put us in a situation where we are not putting human life before, um, the cost. And in this situation, the racial equity is the county, um, the community organization, the city coming together to create a unique solution for this situation. It's not a situation, it's not a solution that we, um, implement every, every day when we, when this situation, but we are. I think my, um, my, uh, other concern is that to go forward, community organization, uh, community leaders, the city, all the parties involved should also play a role in whether that's home visit, uh, checking our, our most vulnerable members of the community so that they don't get into this situation. And I think that's a responsibility of everybody in the community, not just the city and not just the county or the community leaders. So I think we all have to have a role to play, uh, to prevent these sort of, uh, things. And, and so last week, we have a, um, similar situation where we deny the appeal. I think the gentleman wanted to remove the CAT II designation on his property. And in this similar situation, my heart want to grant the appeal, but, um, from a, uh, the, the standpoint of making sure that whoever lives there again, whether it's the brothers or anyone else, have to meet the requirement of a, a livable place, a safe place. And that we shouldn't put a Band-Aid on, uh, restoring the property. But we should do everything we can and put in the right amount of money and funds to, uh, restore the home so that it's safe for, uh, many years to come. And so, um, because of, uh, these difficult thoughts, I think that the right thing to do is to, uh, to deny the appeal and then to work with the brothers, the property owners and other stakeholders to, uh, to make sure that they can purchase this home again and, uh, and live there.
Any, any other, Ms. Prince?
I, I, I think, I'm confused here. What you're saying is by way of, if we deny the appeal today, they have to be out by Friday. And we're not putting it on the category two vacant building list?
Right now, my recommendation is that the property be vacated by Monday, the 28th. In terms of it going on to the vacant building list as a category two, that would be an action that would be undertaken by the Department of Safety and Inspections after this is, process is finished. And it isn't a decision that's in front of the city council right now. It could be in front of the city council if any determination made by the Department of Safety and Inspection is appealed, but it is not in front of you right now.
I'm confused. We have the city and the county and CSP working together on this. So, and CSP is speaking against denying the appeal. So that it doesn't go on the vacant building list. So I, I guess I'm still really confused about what our choices are here. If we, I mean, this is a rare instance where we've got the community and, and the county and the city all coming together to create a situation where these, we are not making somebody homeless. So why would we go against their recommendation of how this would best be handled by us as a body today? I'm, I'm really confused about that. I guess I would be inclined to, I mean, I understand the, the risk factors, but when we have everybody in the room right now who un, also understands the risk factors and is stepping in to take responsibility, I would be inclined to grant the appeal at this point. Or to lay it over. So that we can kind of sort out what our choices are. Because I just feel like we have a really rare instance where we, there's a path to getting this done. And, and putting it on the category two vacant building list and, and way expanding the work that needs to be done on the house to make it habitable again does not seem like the right solution. So I guess if the motion is to deny the appeal, I would ask your consideration either to lay it over or to grant the appeal, or I will vote no on the motion.
And to lay it over and?
To get some more clarity about what the parties are prepared to do so that we don't, we're not heading down a path today to end up with it being a category two vacant building that would greatly expand the work that needed to be done to make it habitable again.
And safe.
Yeah.
Um, well, the question I, the question I have is, whose house is it? I mean, in a way, this seems a little bit absurd. If it's been tax, um, forfeited and it belongs to the state of Minnesota or Ramsey County, why is, um, Ms. Parker appealing?
Yeah.
The eviction, I don't, or the condemnation, I don't understand. I mean, I'm, I'm inclined to move forward with the condemnation for the reasons I've outlined previously, but I do, it is a very strange situation. I mean, I wouldn't feel comfortable doing that if I didn't feel like there was wraparound services here. And Mr. Giles, we did close the public hearing.
Just to ask you for?
But just, okay, I, we'll ask you when, we'll ask you. Okay.
The question was?
Who owns the home?
The state of Minnesota owns the home. There's an application for repurchase. It is very likely that that application would be granted by the county board. That would be consistent with their actions in all the cases that I've reviewed that are like this. And that would transpire in about a month's time.
Okay. Okay, it just seems unusual to have a private party appealing, um, action on a property that's owned by the state of Minnesota. But, Mr. Tolbert, did you have something? Ms. Nelson?
So this is really complicated. I know we're taking a while, but I think it's just important to kind of talk it through all angles. I guess my question is, um, to the concern about the, the concern about the cost going up once it becomes category two and how we're trying to balance cost with just safety and meeting standards and like long-term longevity of the property. Why can't that work just start happening right now with Ramsey County and the partners that are coming around? Like, why does it have to be condemned? Like, is work contingent on the condemnation? That's what I'm trying to understand. Because I don't disagree with what's been said about the state of the building, the safety issues, everything. But if we're just trying to get the work done, then what, why does a condemnation connect to that? And I hope this question's making sense. Does that, what would?
And I, and I'm almost, I think I'm going to support Ms. Prince's suggestion that we lay this over because you've spent hours and hours on this in legislative hearing. And I see, um, county staff and city staff sitting here who've also spent hours and hours on this. And we're not inspectors. We're not professionals on this stuff. So I don't know what we're going to get done sitting here at the table. It's 5:15. So would it make sense to lay it over so that we can continue to weed through this or, Ms. Mormon?
Council president, council members, at the very least, I would ask that the council, as a condition of laying over this matter, um, indicate clearly that the house may not be occupied from October 28th until the council comes to its decision on this, that that, it is not safe.
Mr. Tao?
Can I hear from DSI on their, uh, perspective? Is that okay?
Mr. Bistido?
Council President Bren Moyn, council members, Travis Bistido, Deputy Director for the Department of Safety and Inspections. I think the, as Ms. Mormon laid out before you, the condemnation is what's at issue. The conditions in the property right now are unsafe. So I, I think, you know, if we want to, to, um, move forward with an action that doesn't allow occupancy, we can, we can work through that. But we need action to prevent occupancy going forward. Because there is a real concern that those that are in the property could, um, um, be hurt or even, uh, killed. And, and if I can just add too, you know, the designation of the vacant two, or I'm sorry, the category two vacant building could be appealed. So that part of the conversation could take place at a later date. And maybe there's an opportunity to buy some more time, uh, for that process. So that is, that's a separate issue which, um, Ms. Mormon tried to lay out, but I think that's a, that's a possibility as well.
So separating the condemnation from the category two?
Right.
What we're looking at today is condemnation unfit for human habitation. And then the question about what is the level to which we have to bring the house up to compliance, whether it's a category one or two could be the next conversation.
Right. The, it's possible that the occupants could appeal that designation.
Mr. Tao?
Travis, can you clarify? Um, you said that, um, briefly that there was a way where, um, they couldn't occupy. Can you explain that, how that would look like?
So, um, upholding the condemnation, they would not be allowed to occupy after the 28th. Um, if you, if the council wanted to move forward a motion that just, we didn't necessarily condemn it, but, you know, all parties would agree that they wouldn't occupy it, that could be another option that the department would support. I think the cleaner, more straightforward way is to move forward with the condemnation.
And you're basically, what I heard you say was, it's not safe?
It, it is unsafe.
Okay.
Do we have, Ms. Prince?
I, I would, I would prefer to lay it over conditioned on the home being vacated on the 28th.
Okay.
I, can you repeat that? I didn't understand.
Um, that we lay the manor over, but condition the layover on having the home vacated by Monday, the 28th, as Ms. Mormon had suggested.
So essentially the same thing without condemning it?
Without condemning it.
But it would be vacated? Again, this is, for me, it's uncharted waters. Like, I, I think that we want to make sure that, um, the occupants are safe, that the, the, the building is rehabilitated and that we're, I'm moving forward with something that's enforceable and, um, reasonable. And so I don't, if the, I don't know, on Mr. Tao?
All the facts are now assured.
That's right.
They have already agreed to make it.
Please. There, there really, there really has been a lot of discussion about this not at this table. And again, we're not, we are not building inspectors. We haven't been out to the site. So I appreciate your comments, but I, it's, it's challenging for us to try to make these decisions while we're sitting here. Ms. Schaaf, did you have something to add? Ms. Schaaf, Ms. Mormon?
My understanding is that they do have a plan on where to go after the 28th. That there is something in place that's, Inspector Schaaf has indicated.
There's a housing plan for after the 28th?
Yes.
Okay. So there's, I've heard two, I've heard a motion for, to move forward with the condemnation to, um, begin on the 28th. Vacation on the 28th and then, uh, similar, but without the condemnation to begin on the 28th.
Look at my calendar here. So we don't have a council meeting next week? It won't be here on the 6th. So, I, you know, I, I mean, we could take a vote on Ms., Councilmember Prince's motion, but my, I think that to, I feel responsible for the racial equity piece, and I also feel responsible for the liability piece, and just to, and I'm committed to helping the stakeholder make this a, a project, and a, find a solution that works. So my motion stands.
To, for the condemnation?
To deny the appeal.
Okay. And I, again, I would speak to your motion in support. I rec, I think ultimately, we're getting at the same end result. I, the reason why I feel comfortable with that is that I believe that the occupants have so much support flowing in from the county and community stabilization project, Smurls, and with housing, we just heard that they have housing in front of them, and I think this is unusual versus the, the family that we heard this summer who had nothing. Similar situation, but no support, and there is just, I've never, I'm just looking at who's sitting here today. There's a lot of support that will be wrapped around this, the occupants of the property. So I would speak in support of Mr. Tao's motion. Anyone else? Ms. Nelson?
I, so, you know, I think for me, the only way I feel like I can support this is knowing that the stakeholders are all surrounding the occupants, that the people involved have a plan. I am really concerned about the things that get triggered once you go to condemnation and the additional costs, and I would like to better understand, to the points made in public hearing, how can we work in a long-term structural way to soften that chain of events? Because it is really serious when you're trying to recover, to come back from that from a cost standpoint, and for all the other sort of non-monetary like turmoil and things that, that come. So, so you know what, Councilmember Tao, I will support your motion today, but only because of the many stakeholders involved, and because I feel confident that there's a plan to support the people immediately impacted. But I am really concerned about the underlying potential policy issues, and I would like to keep working to understand how we could fix that as a city, or look at other tools, because it is a weird situation, too. I have to say, I'm frustrated at, I guess, the state of Minnesota, if that's who actually owns the building, for kind of putting everyone else in this situation. I think this is all of us trying to do the best we can in a weird space, but I, I guess this has helped me understand the underlying policy issues potentially, but I, I will support your motion today to work on those things going forward.
This is going to, this is a little, a tiny bit of a tangent, but the other thing is, this must be the fourth time this year that we've had a property where the property was inherited. And I wonder if that we, there needs to be a more formalized process so that people who inherit properties are aware of obligations? Because we've, this is, seems to be a recurring thing that we've seen a few times this year. Any further discussion on Mr. Tao's motion? Ms. Prince?
And, and I really appreciate the thought that's gone into it. I will not, I will be voting against the motion.
Yeah, I mean, I, I think this is a, one of those, one of those thing that, items that really just grabs your heart and squeeze it, and make you, you know, emotionally invested in this, and, and so, you know, I want to acknowledge how difficult it is, but at the same time, I feel like there's, I agree that there's a path forward, and that everybody cared, everybody's involved, and they, we're going to find a good solution in this item. So, I think I move.
All right. If there's no further discussion on Mr. Tao's motion, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Aye.
Four in favor, one opposed, being Councilmember Prince. The resolution is adopted, with a vacate date by October 28th.
Correct. All right. So, Ms. Mormon, is that the extent of legislative hearings?
It is. There's no one else here to testify on a legislative hearing item that I'm aware of.
Ms. Prince?
I, I'm concerned, it's my understanding that number 24 needs to be laid over because we're setting a legislative hearing on November 5th.
24, not 25?
Twenty, 24, I believe. 579 Forest.
My sincere apologies. The list in front of you lists the incorrect address on Forest, it lists 1341 Forest instead of 5979 Forest. The accurate address to refer back to legislative hearing is 579. Again, I'm sorry about that.
Okay. Great. So.
Those are the amendments.
Okay. Okay. So there's this, so we will hear a public, this, we will have a public hearing on the balance of the legislative hearing consent agenda items, number 24 through 32. If there's anyone here on items 24 through 32, this is your public hearing. Seeing none, Ms. Prince wants to close the public hearing and approve. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion prevails.
Five in favor, no one opposed. The public hearing is closed and the consent agenda is adopted as amended.
Okay. And if there's nothing else to come before us, we adjourn.